Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at four forty P M. In council chambers and Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous people. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Inishewabe, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Vlad Chaba, be resolved at the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, be approved as circulated.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried. Item number three, declaration of the cunary interest. None noted at this time. Item number four, petitions and delegations, there are none this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendation, five point one, council minutes, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Delly Byington, be resolved, also for the events of the following meetings. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, minutes of the special meeting of council held April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried, item five point two.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie, be resolved, the council received the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the Personal Labor Services Board, held February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and minutes of the Public Health Unit Board, held March first, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried. Item number six, forcing municipal officers in communications. Adding six point one delegated authority for civil marriage solubilization services, Jennifer Montroy, municipal clerk.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Very briefly, administration is seeking to formally delegate the clerk's authority to two new officiants for civil marriage solubilization services, being Ricky Bacheau and Danielle LeFond, who have undertaken self-funded formal training through the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario. The clerk's authority is provided for under the Marriage Act, however procedurally in Kirkland Lake. The clerk has chosen to have their delegated authority sanctioned by council, as the office of the clerk has not historically performed civil marriage ceremony. It is beneficial to have a pool of officiants for residents to choose from. This includes better availability of an officiant during peak seasons and increasing by legal service options for local residents. In two thousand and twenty-two, there were fifty-one marriage licenses that were issued, and twenty-six were in the peak season. That doesn't necessarily translate to actual officiating for civil ceremonies. However, it is an indicator that there is a peak season and there is a demand. I would like to acknowledge our deputy clerk, Emily Skolman, for coordination of these public requests for appointments and for dropping this report for presentation in Sydney. This is summary of my report, unavailable to answer any questions at council later.
Any questions? Councillor Dykens?
To you, Madam Mayor, to the clerk, is there a residency of Kirkland Lake requirement for people that we authorize or however what we do?
Sorry, didn't quite get the first part of the question.
Is there a residency requirement of the officiant to be a resident of Kirkland Lake? Thank you.
Any further questions? None noted, I'll have a reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Vlad Chaba, be resolved at report number two thousand and twenty-three, C L two eleven, entitled delegation and awarding for civil marriage solubilization services be received, and that the municipal clerk's delegation of duties to Ricky Bacheau and Danielle LeFond as officiants to perform civil marriage ceremonies within the province of Ontario be acknowledged, and finally that the appropriate bylaw to delegate such authority be brought forward for three readings on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item six point two, extra pole banner installation request, Royal Canadian Legion Branch eighty-seven. The Ben Horton, Director of Public Works. Sorry, I was going to call him Dan again, so sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, council. The Royal Canadian Legion Branch eighty-seven from Kirkland Lake has made a request to add extra pole banner brackets to accommodate twelve extra pole banners along Duncan Avenue North. The Legion is willing to bear the cost of the brackets and is requesting the town to bear half of the installation costs. After a quick review, we noticed that there's only eight town-owned light poles situated between Government Road and Prospect Avenue on Duncan Avenue North. Therefore, the Public Works Department is suggesting we grant the Legion's request, but for eight poles rather than twelve poles. Also, we recommend to amend the existing pole banner policy and user fees for length changes. If accepted, the pole banner brackets would become on the property. Something to add as a clarification on the existing thirty-six banners. Twenty-nine of the thirty-six are actually town-owned, and there are seven poles that are actually on private property. Over the years, the town has been permitted to hang our seasonal banners on these seven private poles, but those poles are not part of the pole banner program for the rentals. That's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, Madam Clerk, I'll have a reading with a motion.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen, be resolved at the report number two thousand and twenty-three, P W zero zero three, entitled extra pole banner installation request Royal Canadian Legion be received, that council hereby approve the installation of sixteen town-owned brackets to accommodate eight additional pole banners to be installed on town-owned utility pole on Duncan Avenue North from Government Road to Prospect Avenue. And that council hereby approve that the town of Kirkland Lake incur fifty percent of the installation costs associated with sixty brackets for eight additional pole banner locations. And that corporate twenty twenty-two sixteen pole banner policy and respective schedules be amended to include, reference, and reflect the eight additional locations where pole banners can be installed on town-owned utility poles, and that the amended pole banner policy be inserted into the corporate policy manual. And finally, that the town's user fees bylaw be amended to reflect the additional costs associated with the new pole banner locations offered.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item six point three, amendment to crosswalk painting location of certain surprise fund. You may continue, Mr. Plummer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, council. In August of last year, a report to council was brought forth with a suggested location to paint a pedestrian crosswalk in multitude of colors for the observance of Pride Month. That location was the intersection of Government Road and Prospect Avenue, or specifically between the C I B C Bank and Service Canada. Since that time, we've communicated with the Ministry of Transportation of Ontario, and they are strongly advising against it. The M T O does not permit these on any provincial highways, and they are encouraging us to not use multicolored paint on the connecting link itself for Highway sixty-six. For this reason, we're asking council to consider a different location. We're suggesting the intersection of Duncan Avenue South and Kirkland Street West, more specifically a town hall crossing Kirkland Street. It is the best alternative location considering of those concerns.
Any questions from council? None noted, item correct?
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Janice Cranger, be resolved at report number two thousand and twenty-three, P W four, entitled amendment to crosswalk painting location observance of Pride Month be received, and finally that council approved the change to change the location of the crosswalk painting for Pride Month to Duncan Avenue South at the intersection of Kirkland Street between twenty-nine and thirty-one Duncan Avenue South.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you, sir. Item six point four, Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation. Approval of enabling documents will for us, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Plummer. The document that I, the report that I put before you, it has a number of items. The first one is the actual certificate of incorporation, the articles of incorporation for the new Tourism Development Corporation. The originals for this will be stored at the clerk's discretion at town hall and a copy given to the corporation when it's established. There are two documents that are attached to the report. The first one is a bylaw, sorry, and that bylaw is actually a bylaw of the Tourism Development Corporation. I'll explain how it gets to you, council, before it gets there. That bylaw establishes the ground rules for how the Tourism Development Corporation will work. Specifically establishes the pivotal role of the town in the governance of that corporation. So anything that the Tourism Development Corporation does must reflect the will of council. It does not act on its own. There are three people appointed by council, mayor, councillor, and the C A O. They will be sitting on the board of directors. Their first activity as on that board is to appoint the municipal council as the only voting member on the board of directors of the corporation. That means that any decision that comes must reflect council's will. It doesn't mean that council is now forced to participate in every decision that the corporation makes. Council, similar as it does with the municipal structure, approves the budgets, approves the policies, approves the strategic direction. The individual board members will then ensure that any decision reflects that, and they will be carrying forward on the day-to-day. So why would it come here first? The the bylaw comes here to be accepted by council, is then brought to the corporation, and the corporation, because they will pass that bylaw because they already know that it is the will of the council, so resolution of this decision goes. It's, it sounds a little convoluted, but it is a fairly common approach, and it is designed to ensure one that you maintain control, but also that anything that comes forward does get the proper airing as elected officials. So it, it works very seamlessly, it, it should be good. The second document is the memorandum of agreement. If you recall, when we came to council before, we said, okay, here's a business case study for establishing a corporation. We also brought forward a policy on asset transfer to corporations. That policy allows the municipality to track and legally, according to the municipal act, transfer assets such as money, people, technological devices to that corporation and assign a fair market value. So it keeps all the housekeeping in, in place. This agreement is required by the regulation, and it basically serves as a framework for any kind of exchange of assets and working together, plus anything else that you may want to add to it. So in our case, I added, again, governance, appointment of people and that. It's again, it must come to council so that council accepts it by resolution, so the board, again, is acting at the will of council. So again, it comes through here first. And that's what this one does. So it also sets out any expectations of deliverables that the municipality will require from the corporation in order to work property. So annual budget, operation plans, marketing plans, anything like that, again. And it sets out that the corporation must do that, the council will approve it, it goes back to the corporation to implement it. So those are the two documents that I brought before you. With this, your corporation is there. Don't know where, but there. Forgot, it's actually will be at town halls. That's it.
Any questions from council? Councillor Kylie?
Yeah, as far as the funding for, for the corporation is concerned, do we have a lump sum to start?
No, you don't have, I'm sorry, through you. You don't have a lump sum to start. What I'm bringing forward afterwards, probably at the next council meeting, if my peers have a chance to review the stuff I'm doing, is a bylaw to establish the municipal accommodation tax, and is at council's discretion how much it wishes to give to the corporation, but our previous discussions were fifty percent. With that, that would be its basic operating funds as well. With that money, even if you begin to collect the money, I'm recommending that you establish a reserve fund for the money brought in under hotel tax, who we stay there, fifty percent goes over to the corporation. Corporation can then use that to leverage other dollars from the government if they're doing a, a project or an event, such as that. So that will be coming down the road. I would assume that the corporation's board would like to put forward a plan as to what it's doing while awaiting for council to approve the hotel tax. There's a lot of moving parts that are kind of coming together on that.
Thank you.
Councillor Ranger, through you, Madam Mayor. To you, councillor Kylie. I, it was my understanding that I read somewhere that if a chunk of money from the corporation's town in Kirkland Lake was given or put aside for the
Corporation.
Corporation, that we would then get that money, the town would get that money back once there was some revenue brought in, like that initial investment, am I not correct?
That is, sort of through your version, that is at your council and your board's discretion, and as the mac revenues come in, that fifty percent goes over there. Under that asset transfer policy, you'd be covering how you're accounting for that. And i- is that something that you're taking back from them, or is that investment into the corporation, it's your decision?
Any further questions? None noted. Madam Clerk?
Moved by councillor Vlad Chaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens, be resolved at report number two thousand and twenty-three, the U sixteen entitled Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation. Approval of enabling documents be received, that council received the certificate of incorporation and the articles of incorporation for the Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation. The council approved the form and content of Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation by law number K L T N C two thousand and twenty-three V zero zero one as presented, and that the mayor and municipal clerk be authorized to execute a memorandum of agreement during the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake and the Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation as presented, and that the mayor and municipal clerk be authorized to execute operational agreements of mutual interest as required between the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake and the Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation, subject to the form and content of those set agreements being satisfactory to the town solicitor, and finally that an execution bylaw be brought forward for three readings on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you, Madam. Item six point five, two thousand and twenty-two, summary of remuneration and expenses of elected officials. Mister Lloyd Fromper, Treasurer.
Madam Mayor, through you, council. You have a report in front of you, it's basically an information report. It's required to be filed every year and, and to council's attention. Essentially, the last page of it is, is the actual meat of the report, it breaks down how much each of you has paid because everybody is here at the end of the year through, and through their travel and, and some of the training and stuff like that that happened as well. It's really that simple a report. It's just an accounting process, we're a little bit late, it should be filed by the end of March, but it's in front of you now. Happy to take any questions, or?
Any questions from councillor? Councillor Ranger?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The title of it is just a question for me, because it says two thousand and twenty-one summary of remuneration, but as new councillors, we weren't here for two thousand and twenty-one, but our names are listed. Is that just a clerical error, or?
It is a clerical error. Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it should say two thousand and twenty-two.
Oh, because I want my money.
I went to that conference.
Yeah, this, councillor Dykens, and I worked as councillors in two thousand and twenty-one, so I was wondering about it, it's just titles there.
Anything more from council? Councillor Chaba?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. Is it you file this annually from January to December, or is it
calendar year?
I mean.
It is a calendar year, calendar year, calendar year, oh, yes.
Anything further from council? Nothing noted. Madam Clerk?
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie, be resolved at report number two thousand and twenty-three, Ben Four, entitled two thousand and twenty-two summary of remuneration and expenses elected officials be received.
All in favor?
But with the correction in the title, right?
It is no ready to be changed.
Yeah.
None opposed, item carried unanimous. Item six point six, two thousand and twenty-three, final municipal budget update. Mister Proffrey is going to move ahead.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, to council. So we'll basically, at the end of the budget process here, this is the see there's a bylaw attached to your agenda for the wrong, which actually the numbers of you were speaking about last week. Overall, I'm not sure, there's much more information to share with you. The savings, as you can see in the report, were just over a hundred and six thousand dollars from the, the last set of decisions and stuff like that that you guys saw last week. There was some moving around within the budget. Didn't change the bottom line, but I mentioned before, this new budget software. So there was a couple of mistakes made in the process of importing it and, and, and moving it around between departments. And plus, we've got some changes in where the departments are being managed from. So I'll just very quickly kind of hit on them, just so you know. So under building services, we had to reinstate a portion of the salary. Again, when we do our salary estimates, some of these positions have been empty, and we're trying to guess when we're going to hire somebody and not going to hire somebody in a minute, so that's where these kind of mistakes typically come from. There was an amount removed part of the Community Improvement Plan, which was just a straight-up error that was removed from the budget, preliminary budget, it's back in there now. And there was a, an overapproval for, for debt payments within the lighting public works department. So when you put it all together, it's almost a wash, there was a three thousand dollar difference, which we left in the, in the development budget. So it didn't change the bottom line, so we're not talking about changing anything other than what you guys had already decided on in the last budget meeting. And that was, like I said, just over a hundred and six thousand dollars savings from that point. So this reflects about a three point six percent residential tax rate increase. Of course, you, it doesn't fall down perfectly to the other categories within there, commercial, industrial, and stuff like that. And as a matter of fact, just to be clear, because it's not really laid out, there's no kind of comparison from year to year. We talk about the residential rate, because that seems to have the most attention. But the industrial rate actually went down. I'm just going to take a minute to explain that, because I'm sure you'll hear about it starting tomorrow. It went down, there's kind of a fluke of the municipal act is when you have ratios that are in excess of what the province says are fair, they set the fair number, and if you have a ratio that's higher than their fair number, they limit how much the industrial and commercial classes can increase in a particular year. So we hit that. Anytime you have a very large increase in your industrial assessment, that gets triggered automatically. Now, just to be clear again, even though the industrial rate was down, we're actually collecting more industrial tax than we did in prior years. And that's because the assessment went up more than that cap created a problem for it. But just to kind of help you, in case somebody brings up the fact and they see a, a big decrease in the industrial rate, yes, it's a decrease in the rate, but the actual amount that we're pulling through the tax levy is up from prior years. So they also bear the, the increases that we're rolling out to the residential. It just looks odd if you were doing a year-over-year comparison. So I just wanted to point that out in case, you know, anybody gets in a position where they have to kind of explain it. If you want a more detailed explanation, you're welcome to give me a phone call. It's been an ugly process. Go away, right, buddy, yeah.
Thank you. Before opening the floor, I just want to thank senior management, Treasury Department, the clerk, the C A O, and council for all doing their part in bringing this to that three point six. It was a very challenging year, as everyone knows. And I have to commend, though it's a big ask for many of our community members, I think this is fair for what we want to achieve, any investments we want to make in our community. So thank you to all members of staff and council. Questions and comments? Councillor Chaba?
Through me, Madam Chair, to the treasurer. You said something about industrial rate. What is that rate? And would that rate be the same thing as commercial rate, or is it?
Yeah, so, you, Madam Mayor, to council, get better at that. The, they're all separate rates. So we have the residential rates, we have multi, multi-residential rates, we have commercial, industrial, and gas, sorry, I forget what the proper term for it is. Thank you. Anyways, they all have separate rates. It's usually based on the residential rate, it's a multiple of the residential rate for most classes. And the industrial rate, through that very short mechanism I just described to you, isn't a multiple of the residential rate, is capped, or hits that multiple. So, but they're all, you know, so residential is set as one, commercial might be one point four. You know, it is based on the ratio, because you're actually passing in a bylaw later as well. Yeah, so that kind of gives a I guess a short answer.
Thank you.
Anything further? Councillor Owen?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. Just want to comment that I found this year the senior staff was very much more focused when they, when they present us with their original proposals, that there wasn't a lot of wants, there was a lot of needs, and therefore, in some ways, it made councillors job easier because we were looking at pretty much all needs, and I want to commend senior staff for doing that, because it hasn't always been that way. And I just want to say to the residents, look, I'm on a fixed income. I do not like tax increases. And I never made big bucks, nor did my wife when we were working, so we don't have an estate that we're sitting on. But the reality of the situation is we cannot continue to operate in a deficit position when it comes to our core services that we must provide. And as much as I don't like to pay anymore, and, and it will put a crimp on my spending, I think this is a fair budget. It's going to be difficult for people in my situation and other, and there's a lot of people in town in this situation. Not everybody makes a hundred thousand dollars a year in this town, nor do their combined income top a thousand, a hundred thousand. But I honestly think this is the best we could do for the residents of Kirkland Lake while moving the town ahead at the same time. So thank you.
Councillor Kylie?
To you, Madam Mayor. To the C A O, Alan, you had mentioned the four point three five original proposal would result in a ninety dollar per year residential increase. Have we figured out on three point six?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to council. The treasurer can confirm that it's just under seven dollars a month.
Yeah, it's, it's approximately seventy, rounding.
Okay.
Yeah. Per, per year, so a little bit under seven per month.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Madam Mayor? The Madam Clerk?
It's okay, Madam. You do a fine job.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie, be resolved at report number two thousand and twenty-three, been by, entitled two thousand and twenty-three filing of municipal budget update be received for information, and that council or the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake hereby approve the filed two thousand and twenty-three budget as presented, and finally that the appropriate bylaw for the two thousand and twenty-three budget be presented for three readings on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Item number seven, considerations and notice of motions. I will ask councillor And I will ask Counselor Owens, you lead chair at this point. Do you have a switch or do you have another?
Item seven point one, Stacy White, barriers for women in politics, township of Luton. Bill? I think that's how that's pronounced, barriers for women in politics.
Um, so as stated in the motion, women have been historically underrepresented, uh, underrepresented in politics and continue to face barriers and discrimination in their pursuit of elected office. Misogyny and harassment have been identified as significant challenges for women in politics. I'm asking that we resolve to express our support of women in politics. They are right to participate in the political environment that is free from misogyny and harassment, where everyone feels equal and to commit to taking steps to ensure our political environment is inclusive and welcoming to all individuals. And we encourage action at the provincial level to create legislation to ensure equality, safety and security of women in politics. Counselor Ranger, do you have anything to add to the motion?
No.
Any comments or questions? Sorry.
The reading of the motion?
Sure. Moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Counselor Shaba had a question here.
Yeah, uh, to you, uh, uh, Mr. Red Bull Chair. Um, I'm going to support this motion. I have girls that I, I want to make sure that uh, in their lives, they're treated uh, equally as any other that is. And, and I hope that uh, in years to come, there will be no need for this resolution. We will pass that stage and just look at people for who, what they are, who they are, what they can offer. I hope that day we, we'll come around, but for now, we're not there yet. And this resolution is needed. And, and again, uh, don't forget some of our indigenous women too, that are still struggling to, uh, have a voice in our wider community. Thank you.
Thank you. That's well said. Any more comments or questions? All have a motion.
Okay. Moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger. Whereas the town of Kirkland Lake values equality and inclusivity in all areas of life, including politics. And whereas women have historically been underrepresented in politics and contained a big barriers and discrimination in their pursuit of elected office. And whereas misogyny and harassment have been identified as significant challenges for women in politics, both in Canada and around the world. And whereas the town of Kirkland Lake believes that all individuals have the right to participate in a political environment that is free from discrimination, harassment and misogyny. Therefore, being resolved, the council of appropriation of the town Kirkland Lake expresses its support for women in politics and their right to participate in a political environment that is free from misogyny and harassment and where everyone feels equal. And that this council commits to taking steps to ensure that our political environment is inclusive and welcoming to all individuals, regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation or other identity factors. And that this council encourages action at the provincial level to create legislation to ensure equality, safety and security of women in politics. And that this council encourages all forms of government across Canada in supporting women in politics and promoting gender equality in all areas of society. And find that a copy of this motion be sent to the premier of Ontario, the ministry of municipal affairs and housing, association of municipalities of Ontario, which is able, federation of northern Ontario municipalities, this has been all. M P P Cochrane to Miss Cyma, M P Timon James Bay, all municipalities within the district of Tomis Cyma and the district, and the Tomis Cyma district social services and administration work representing all unorganized territories within the district.
Carrie? Item seven point two, Mayor Stacy White, Enbridge Gas Utility Field Locating Fees.
Okay, so as it's, um, states in the motion, uh, Enbridge Gas intends to charge a two hundred dollar flat rate fee to third party contractors. Those contractors actually include municipalities. Uh, these locate requests that municipalities um, request are actually on lands that we allow these utilities to use for free because we have agreements with them. So it really makes little sense for them to be charging us a fee to find lines on lands that we allow them to use for free. Um, so it's, it's important to make it clear to the province, these costs should be borne by the utilities as they already get used to these lands for free. That's all I have.
Counselor Owen, yes, thank you. Are you, I think, Chair? There already is a problem with contractors not doing locates. Um, I'm not going to say it's a widespread problem because I don't know, but I know that, um, for reasons of speed or whatever, a lot, a number of contractors often overlook this part. And, and, and as a result, there could be a disaster. If, if they were to hit a gas line and there'd be a spark, it, it could be very disastrous. If we are now going to charge contractors, including the town of Kirkland Lake, two hundred dollars a time for a locate, that's going to encourage more contractors to do less locates and raise the risk to all residents of Kirkland Lake. And that is a very dangerous situation that, that I think should be avoided. If the gas company in this case is issued the right to, um, charge this fee, I think it would be in the town's best interest to start charging the rent where all their lines are. Um, but my big concern is that people will skip the locate. And we potentially could have a disaster.
Counselor Ranger?
Um, to you, Chair, I think you missed another valid point that you had put on the report was, you know, if it starts with Enbridge, where does it end? Uh, we have others that uh, utility services that I think would follow the trends and once it starts, where does it stop? So.
Any more questions or comments?
On the motion?
Moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Whereas Enbridge recently made an announcement of their intention to begin charging third party contractors and other utilities two hundred dollars Canadian plus applicable taxes for utility locates where a field locate was required. And whereas third party contractors include Ontario municipalities. And whereas these locate requests are only required for Ontario municipalities have allowed utilities to use municipal rights of way at no charge to the utilities. And whereas this announcement of the new downloaded cost will negatively, negatively impact the budgets of Ontario municipalities which are already burdened. And whereas Enbridge, if successful in implementing this new chart, a precedence is set for other utility companies to also begin charging for locates. Therefore, be resolved, the council for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake strongly opposes these utility locate costs being downward to Ontario municipalities by Enbridge Gas or other utilities. And that the province of Ontario's Ministry of Public and Business Service Delivery make it clear that these costs must be borne by the utilities themselves. And find that a copy of this motion be forwarded to the premier of Ontario, the ministry of public and business service delivery, industry of infrastructure, industry of energy, M P P Cochrane to Miss Cyma, M P Timon James Bay, association of Ontario municipalities, federation of northern Ontario municipalities, association of Ontario road supervisors and all municipalities within the district of Tomis Cyma.
All in favor? Carrie?
Um, Grand Sir, please.
I will pass the chair over to Counselor Dinkins, now.
Um, item seven point three, Mayor Stacy White. Reinstatement of legislation permitting a municipality to retain surplus proceeds from tax sales non of exit assets. Reinstatement of legislation permitting municipalities to reclaim surplus proceeds from tax sales. Any question?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Dinkins, Madam Acting Chair. Um, so as it states in the motion, public tax sale process is a burdensome undertaking for municipalities. And at times, the recovering of the proceeds potentially for the sale could benefit the Crown in right of Ontario only. Um, so prior to this repealing, the municipal act section three eighty-six uh, allow municipalities to retain those surplus proceeds. And we should lobby to have all relevant taxation bodies to reinstate the previous legislation as it was written.
Um, any questions or comments? I'll be ready for a question. Okay. Uh, all in favor? I must read the one. Oh, sorry, um, Madam Clerk, just to read the motion.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. Whereas prior to being repealed by the law, modernizing Ontario Municipal Legislation Act two thousand seventeen, section three eighty-six of the municipal act two thousand and one has amended, allow for a municipality to retain surplus proceeds for tax sales within their jurisdiction. And whereas public tax sale processes burdensome to municipalities who invest a considerable amount of time and money recovering these proceeds for the potential sole benefit of the Crown and right of Ontario. Therefore, be resolved, the council or the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake for us to send a letter through the office of the municipal clerk to all relevant provincial taxation bodies urging them to reinstate previous legislation that permitted a municipality to apply for and retain the surplus proceeds from a tax sale within its jurisdiction. And find that a copy of this motion be sent to the premier of Ontario, the ministry of finance, the ministry of municipal affairs and housing, association of municipalities of Ontario, federation of northern Ontario municipalities, M P P Cochrane to Miss Cyma and all municipalities within the district of Tomis Cyma.
All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, you may enter.
Thank you, Acting Chair. I do appreciate, you guys are doing a better job than me this evening. You'll have to forgive me, my mind is elsewhere. Item seven point four is deferred. This is a motion by myself and Counselor Kylie. I was unable to get proper wording, um, before the agenda went up. Um, item number eight, introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws. Eight point one, bylaw number twenty-three dash zero one three.
Moved by Counselor Janice Ranger, seconded by Counselor La Chava. It resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor clerk and instill the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three thirteen being a bylaw to authorize the corporation of the town Kirkland Lake to enter into an agreement with the United Zero Workers Local Twenty.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item number eight point two, bylaw twenty-three dash oh two seven.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. It resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, signed, passed, signed by the mayor clerk and instill the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three twenty-seven being a bylaw to provide for delegated authority and civil, uh, merit solidization services.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, eight point three, bylaw on twenty-three dash zero two eight.
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Patrick Riley. It resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor clerk and instill the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three twenty-eight being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a municipal services agreement between the corporation of the town Kirkland Lake and the Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item eight point four, bylaw twenty-three dash oh two nine.
Moved by Counselor Janice Ranger, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. It resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor clerk and instill the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three twenty-nine being a bylaw to set tax ratio for municipal purposes.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item very unanimous. Item eight point five, bylaw number twenty-three dash oh, uh, zero three zero.
Moved by Counselor Janice Ranger, seconded by Counselor Patrick Riley. It resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor clerk and instill the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three thirty being a bylaw to adopt the twenty twenty-three municipal budget.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item eight point six, bylaw number twenty-three dash oh three one.
Moved by Counselor Janice Ranger, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. It resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor clerk and instill the corporation be affixed there too, bylaw number twenty-three thirty-one. Being a bylaw to adopt the estimates of all sums required during the year and to strike the rates of taxation for the year twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted. Sorry, uh, item carried unanimous. Go ahead. Item number nine, question from council, the staff, none noting. Item number ten, notices of motion? There are none at this meeting. Item number eleven, counselors reports. Counselor Owen?
Owen, yes, and please go with me on this one. Uh, yesterday I attended a memorial service for Paul LeQua. Um, he's one of the people I feel that really makes Kirkland Lake a special place to live. He, uh, he's done a lot in this community. Uh, he never looked for credit, he never looked for recognition. Um, I know him best from hockey. And when I was an unruly coach and he was the referee, he gave me a little leeway and then he would give me a little look. And I would know, that's it. Um, but I also, I, I coached hockey at all, all minor hockey age levels. And the past two years, I had the pleasure of watching um, Paul work with like five, six year olds. And that is the hardest group to coach. Each group has their own special things he has to deal with, but they do not have an attention span. And I watched him out there with amazement. He had those kids eating out of his hand. I don't know how he did it. He never had to raise his voice. He didn't have to skate down the ice to bring some four or five year old back into play. And one of the comments made at, at the memorial service of the service yesterday was that when they were looking for pictures of just Paul, they had a great difficulty finding them because Paul was always with his kid. And, uh, his daughter uh, phoned Paul's fiance and requested to speak at the memorial service. And she's doing, she did a much better job than I'm doing right now. She was amazing. So I will miss Paul, the town will miss Richard. And there is a service tonight for some sort of gathering at complex, I believe it starts at six, right, gents? And I would encourage everyone to go, whether you knew Paul or not. Because he was just that special guy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Owen. Counselor Shaba?
Uh, thank you, Madam, uh, Chair. After that, I'm going to defer my, uh, report to another time. I'm just going to report on our meeting of the services board. Uh, I have to end, and I would very much advise it to all, uh, send my, uh, like a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaba. Anything further? Uh, I do have to report that, uh, the town Kirkland Lake will be proclaiming May twenty-first to the twenty-seventh paramedic services week. We'll be doing that on May second and, uh, April twenty-eighth, the town will be half masking our flags the day of mourning for persons killed or injured in the workplace. Madam Clerk?
Moved by Counselor La Chava, seconded by Counselor Patrick Riley. It be resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried. Item number twelve, additional information. Ball point one is the proclamation of community living month, uh, May of twenty twenty-three. It's a belief. Yeah. Uh, whereas community living Ontario represents more than twelve hundred people, including people who have intellectual disability, their families and concerned citizens through a federation of a hundred and seventeen local associations across Ontario. And whereas community living Ontario promotes values and community development, contributes to a social policy, advocates while providing crucial services to people with disabilities and their families. And whereas raising awareness of inclusion and public acceptance for the support of these services has started with and has been championed by the community living Kirkland Lake for seventy.
And has been championed by the Community Living Kirkland Lake for seventy-six years. And whereas Community Living Kirkland Lake provides residential community and support services for eighty people and employees. Over seventy-five members of our community. And whereas the quality of these services depends largely on the dedication of trained workers. Who provide these services while working towards community inclusion for people they support. And whereas the availability of these services helps to improve the quality of life for everyone. While making our communities stronger and more stable. And whereas the greater recognition and understanding of the critical role that Community Living plays in our community. Is needed to ensure and the continued availability and improvement of services. Now therefore, I, Stacy White, Mayor of the town of Kirkland Lake, do here right proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-three as Community Living Month.
Item number. Twelve point two, proclamation, mental health. Week May first to the seventh, twenty twenty-three. Whereas all people have an equal right to the highest attainable standard of mental wellbeing. Which is inseparable from their right to societal protection and adequate standard of living and freedom from discrimination. And whereas one in five Canadians experience mental illness or a mental health issue in any given year. But five in five of us have mental health. And whereas government indigenous leadership, health authorities and business, labor and community organizations. Have shared opportunity to improve the lives and health of people in Ontario by providing the basic support. That lay the foundation for the mental wellness and delivering the services that enable recovery from the mental illness and problem of substance abuse. And whereas the Canadian Mental Health Association, otherwise known as CHMA. Calls for the public to become informed about mental health. And to focus collective efforts on the prevention of mental health. And substance use problems from poverty reduction to wrap around health services. And whereas CMHA introduced Mental Health Week. In nineteen fifty-one to raise awareness of mental illnesses in Canada. And whereas Mental Health Week provides a unique opportunity to affirm our shared commitment. To building public awareness of the effects of mental health problems and substance. Use-related problems and the importance of ensuing access to high-quality, accessible, equitable and. Recovery-orienteded services. And social supports and whereas this year, the CMHA, Cochrane Timiscame. Has rallied together with Porcupine Timiscame and Kirkland Lake Health Units, Timmins Youth Wellness Hub. Councils, this care Catholic District de Grande Rivière. Um, also. The, um, council, so this tear public to northeast of Ontario, District School Board, Ontario Northeast North. Eastern Catholic District School Board, Northeastern Ontario Family and Children's Services, City of Timmins. And Algonima, uh, University in planning many exciting activities and community initiatives. Planning in all the communities of Kirkland Lake, Inglehart, Timiscame Shores, Timmins, Matheson, Eerofo Falls, Cochrane, Tappus Gathing and Hurst. Now, I, therefore, I, Stacy White, Mayor of the town of Kirkland Lake. Do here right proclaim the week of May first to May seventh, twenty twenty-three as Mental Health Week.
Hey, and I'll have a municipal court, read the residence.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor La Chava. It resolved that council signed the proclamations for Community Living Month, the Mental Health Week in the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted? There is no close session this evening, therefore there are no hatters from close session. Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw.
移到 by councillor Patrick Riley, seconded by councillor La Chava, be resolved that the following bylaw. Be read at first, second and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor clerk and still the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three thirty-two being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting of April eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item very unanimous, item number sixteen, adjournment?
Moved by.
Uh, point of, uh, clarification. Um, we, we do get, uh, uh, emails from our. A TKL, our email address, uh. And we forward that to the CEO, or CEO, do you read that, because I got one today. And I just don't know how to handle that.
It's different.
So. From the right there, I've got an email from the right there, request of a sample to our TKL account. So when that comes in, is it to be forwarded to? To you guys or you guys will need it? Uh, who's, well, who's reading it? I've got one there.
Okay.
What's that, clarification?
Okay, councillor Shaba, that can be addressed, um, after.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, adjournment?
Moved by councillor Dolly Dyken, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved that this regular meeting of council do now return at five thirty-five minutes.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried, thank you.